Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings, to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Good morning, I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack National Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected, follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Um, Mr. Bob Bestart, the normal chairman is not available tonight, so I'm acting in his stead. So as Acting Chair of the Merrimack Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 crisis, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Zoom platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing either of the following phone numbers: The meeting ID is 958-3643-5137. The meeting may also be viewed on Merrimack TV Channel 20, which is the Comcast channel, or on Merrimack TV webpage, When public comment is opened, by the Chair pressing the line on your phone to raise your hand in order to be recognized. Once called upon, press *6 to unmute your order and present your testimony. B) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting using Zoom, and instructions are provided in the meeting agenda posted on the Town of Merrimack's website Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Anybody has a problem, Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states your presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Nelson Disco?
I'm Nelson Disco and I'm at home alone in my house.
Neil Anketell?
I'm Neil Anketell and I am in the office by myself.
Bill Boyd?
Good evening, this is Merrimack Town Council Bill Boyd. I'm in my office by myself. I am participating remotely, I can hear everything, and I'm prepared to participate in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
I'm Alistair Moens. I'm in my study at home. I'm by myself, there's nobody else around.
Okay, so having done that bit, let's move on to the first order of business.
Real quick, before you do, can you please appoint Nelson to a seating position?
Nelson, I hereby appoint you to a voting seat on the Board tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right. So I'm calling the meeting to order. Please note that the next Planning Board meeting will be on, I did have it here, February, there we go, February 2nd, 2021, at 7:00 PM, again remotely via Zoom. So the first order of business is the Planning Adjourning Administration's report. Do you have anything for us, Robert?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, next order of business is City Bay Realty LLC. Continued review of waiver of full site plan for the construction of a 1,425 feet square foot play area for an existing child daycare use. The parcel is located at 416 Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial District, Aquifer Conservation, Flood Hazard Conservation, Elderly Housing and Town Center Overlay District. Tax map 5D-4003, case number P, Planning Board number 2021-01. And this item is continued from the January 5th, 2021 Planning Board meeting. I think we're going to be asking Matt to take us through it.
So, good evening, Matt Peterson with Keach Northam Associates here representing the Merrimack Village Mall here for City Bay Realty. I assume you guys can see the screen here? Plan in front of you? Yes, good.
Yes.
All right. This was pretty minor last time. The green area here, we're talking about the daycare. They had one previously across for anybody that wasn't here last time. Some of the questions that were asked at the last hearing, I've addressed on this plan here. I'll just walk you through them quickly and let you guys take a look. The first one was here to install a removable traffic calming speed bump as they would come around the corner, so that would slow down the traffic there. The second thing I did is I hatched in this area here as a proposed loading area. I also hatched in this area as a no parking area, so to minimize and keep people away from that area that's there. The next thing you asked about was the jersey barriers that we had on this side and this side here. I proposed to wrap something around all three sides. I was trying to come up with something a little aesthetically pleasing out there. So I decided on a wood beam barrier, kind of guardrail that we do. Split beam, two pieces spaced every six feet. You know, we do this in residential areas and stuff like that on private roadways, where we don't want to do the metal guardrail. So it was just something I threw out there. I think you guys were looking something to match with the wood maybe and stuff like that, so that's kind of the route I went there. And then the last minor thing is over here in the notes. You asked that we put these pavement direction errors be installed back that were actually part of the plan. So I put a note that pavement direction errors should be installed as shown on the plan. And that comes back to the circulations around the building that you had asked for. So again, I think the biggest one was what kind of protection barrier? That's my idea. It's not set in stone. I mean, we're just trying to get something that makes sense for everybody. And I think that addresses what you were looking for on this. So really, I can answer any questions that you have. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. And I'll throw this meeting open to a comment from the members of the Board. I hear you see your hand go up, Nelson.
Yeah, okay. I don't know whether to shout or to put up my hand. I just had one mind, I think, Matt, I think you've addressed the issue. Those are the important things. There was one minor issue, I think, and it had to do with the emergency access to the adjacent property. There was a question there about parking. I see you've got them striped for no parking. And I think that takes care of it, but you didn't mention it in your discussion. So I just want to bring that out.
Yep, no, I had it there. I think one of the things the staff had commented to you guys to look at were no parking signs, maybe along this, the wood beam guardrail. I didn't put that there, but I think that's where their comments were kind of looking at. That's really up to you guys. It's either way, it doesn't matter to me.
No, I'm talking about the entrance to the...
Yeah, you're talking right here, no parking here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we strike that.
Okay, and so that's striped for no parking now. And will there be some signs there or something that'll indicate that parking's a no-no in those spots?
It doesn't look like I added a sign, but I'll add a sign.
Thank you.
I think certainly we should ask you to put signs on the vertical fence surrounding the play area.
Okay.
That was asked at the last meeting and I would recommend a couple of no parking signs in the right place.
Not a problem.
Is that striped in the area? Is that marked no parking in any way? Or that's just striped?
I just striped it. I think it would be better to put the signs on the fence here than to stripe it, because as you know, pavement goes away over time and I think the signs would be better on that.
I see the signs on the fence. First speaking for myself.
Okay, I'm okay with this plan as he's described it.
Is anybody else? Robert?
Just for the Board's awareness, I did hear verbal commentary from the Fire Marshal on this. Their recommendation, while I don't have it in writing, is for protection of the fence to either be jersey barrier or bollard, not the wood rail fence that was proposed. However, as the Board, it seemed very clear in the last meeting that they did not, the Board did not want the jersey barrier solution. So I would leave that up to the Board as to decide what's appropriate. Again, I do not have Captain Manuelli's comments in writing. It's just only verbal from him.
Well, my comment to that would be jersey barriers use up more land area. They take up more space. So you'll be narrowing, you'd be narrowing the roadway even more unnecessarily. So I wouldn't recommend following the Fire Marshal's suggestion. But bollards or the wooden barrier, I'm easy. I'm open to all suggestions.
I think the wooden barrier is a much more aesthetically pleasing. I'd be in favor of that choice. And this is a low-speed area. It's not like you're near a highway or something where a high-speed car is liable...
All right!
What? What was that?
That was a notification, my apologies.
Oh.
All right, it's all right.
Hey.
There it is there.
You got my comment is that I favor the wooden fence. Thank you.
Nelson feels the wooden barrier. Have you got any preference, Bill?
Well, just a couple of things. Matt, thank you for the speed bump. I appreciate that. I think that's gonna do a lot of good of controlling the speed on the back there. Did you ever get a resolution regarding the dumpsters that are back there? Are those going to be moved? Or do we need to fix the plan to reflect that the dumpsters are going to remain in that location despite what the other plan is saying, what the older plan was saying?
Steve did not have any final clarification. I'd rather change his plan to leave those dumpsters in the back there based on this here. I don't know where else I'd put them at this point.
No, I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you. Are we still keeping it two-way back there?
Yes, I kept the same layout that it was before.
Okay.
Two-way here, two-way just up to loading and then it goes back around one way this way or that.
Okay.
How the original was.
Could somebody educate me on the bollards? Are we talking about like a bollard that you would find on a dock down in Boston Harbor? Like one of those big, I mean, what type of a commercial bollard would be used in a situation like this, Robert? Or Matt, can somebody help me?
It would just be the normal ones you see in front of your CVS and Rite-Aids near the buildings and stuff like that. The little round ones, the four that you usually see at the entrance to a rightway. You'd probably see them right around this here. You know, just three feet, four feet tall. You'd place them every four feet because you don't want a car to be able to go through it. So it's, you know, I like the wood a lot better, but...
I don't disagree with you. I'm just trying, I wish, I wish we had feedback from the Fire Marshal that would elaborate why they wanted the, why they wanted a bollard. I mean, I think all of us are in agreement regarding the jersey barrier. I was just curious why the bollard was more practical from the fire department's perspective as opposed to the wooden barrier that you're proposing?
Well, it is filled with concrete.
I'm sorry?
It's kind of like the jersey barrier. It's filled with concrete.
Okay.
So a little bit more of a, you know, that and rebarb inside it.
Stronger, yeah.
It's stronger, okay. Okay. But is...
Again, like was stated earlier, if we were on a side of a road or if we had heavy volume speeds, you know, yes, that's why we use this wood beam guardrail on residential, private driveways that you see, you know, a thousand-foot road coming. We'll do this because the speeds just aren't there.
Okay. And again, stupid question. The wooden posts are going to be into the ground, correct?
Yes.
There's a detail there somewhere. He showed us the detail a minute ago.
So they're buried three feet, six inches down. They're two and a half feet up. And then these are double four-by-six rails. I mean, it's beefy. I mean, this isn't just a little fence that I put up.
And with the wooden barrier, for lack of a better term, are we comfortable that delivery vans are going to be able to make the turn coming through there with the two-way traffic?
Yes, the good thing over here is that in this location, we have over 32 feet just to this point here. And then we just strike this even more, so there's plenty of movement around that corner.
Okay. I appreciate the calming bumps, speed bump. I really, I really appreciate that. I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyd. Has anybody else got any further observations? I'll throw the matter open to the general public. If there's any member of the public wishes to speak, please do *6 as the instructions and give us your input. Seeing none, I will close the public meeting. Do I have an understanding that we've settled on the wood barrier rather than bollards?
Yeah, yes.
All right, could I then have a motion for the for the members of the committee?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Boyd Grant condition to final approval to the application with the following precedent conditions to be fulfilled within six months and prior to plan signing this other special otherwise specified, the 14 recommendations that are outlined in Casey Wolf's memorandum to Chairman Bob Best dated January 14th, 2021. Did I get that right, Matt?
And can Mr. Nelson's hand go up?
I was going to second, that's all.
I just want to clarify if that motion includes the no parking signage request at the sewer easement.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
And I'll take a roll call. Nelson Disco?
I vote in favor of this motion.
Neil Anketell?
I vote in favor.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Alistair Moens votes aye. So that's the motion that passes 4-0-0. Thank you very much indeed, everybody. So let's move on.
Matt, thanks for working with us on this, appreciate it.
No problem, thank you guys.
Have a good week.
No, you're not getting rid of me that quick.
Oh, welcome back.
Hang on. Right back at it.
Okay, so that takes us to the next item. Item four. Wonderland Farm LLC applicant and Linda Raymond owner. This is a conceptual discussion regarding a proposed Christmas tree farm, construction of site improvements, and Christmas tree sales. Parcels are located at 105 and 107 Turkey Hill Road in the R1 Residential by soils and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 4C locks 229 and 22901. Is there anything we should hear from you, Bob, before we discuss this?
I just wanted to note again that this is a conceptual discussion. The applicant's here to get feedback from the Board. They do require variance for this use. They are scheduled to go to the January zoning board meeting for that. We have received a couple of letters from the abutters, which I'll have to back up. The applicant took the extra step of notifying the abutters of this concept discussion to try to get as much feedback and information as possible before going forward with a formal submission, should their variance request be successful. Outside of that, standard procedure for a concept discussion, offer the applicant as much feedback as you can. Tell them what you'd be looking for for a full application. And we did receive a couple of comment letters from the abutters that I would recommend be read into the record as well as, even though it's not a public hearing, taking feedback from any public that may attend just to give the applicant as much feedback as possible.
I'll read them into the record. Thank you, Robert, when we've finished, when the Board has finished discussing it. So I throw the matter open to the Board.
All right, would you like me to give a little presentation?
Yes, I would.
All right, excellent. Good evening again, Matt Peterson, Keach Northam Associates. As kind of stated on the last application, I think one of the things I tried to do is work with Boards throughout this state as much as possible, last 25 years doing this. And I really appreciate taking the time for conceptual here. This is a little bit different of a project here. So as Robert said, we notified the abutters because we're trying to be upfront with everything as we're moving forward here to see what we can do. This project, this parcel here was subdivided out last year, here, last October, November. We had subdivided out this 8.66 acre parcel from the existing parcel that's here. They had gotten a variance for frontage at the time. We talked with the abutters and stuff like that that the buildable area is really up back in here. It's not in this little buildable area sliver up in the front here. There's really no house that we could put up in that location. We had discussions at the time about the driveway that went through here accessing it and it didn't need the wetland crossing there because they had gone and looked at that different type of stuff. So this project's been out there for a couple of months now. And my client, who's online here, Derek and Vanessa Gagnon, looked at purchasing this property to do a Christmas tree farm. Based on some of the impact that I had gotten from the previous abutters, again, we felt that it was pretty worth our while to have a conceptual-type hearing based on this. Again, the house septic, that type of stuff, would sit back in this location here. There were some concerns with the abutters and stuff like that of a house in the back basically being flag lots. So when these guys came to us, this kind of made sense to take a look at it. It's a very low impact for 90% of the year. Their stuff starts after November, after Thanksgiving, and runs for those six weeks, I think it is, from that point there. Couple of years, it might be an extra week in there or so. So it's a short window of sales of trees, but obviously it would be growing trees throughout the year. So what they would like to do in the back area here is create areas, and this isn't exact, this is just kind of showing you kind of rough areas, but create areas for Christmas trees. Couple of different areas. I know Derek's got a couple layouts here. I just wanted the Board to see roughly what it would be doing. But it'd be looking at taking this back area here and growing Christmas trees. About 1,000 Christmas trees per acre. So I think it's like 6,000, 7,000 trees that can be grown on it. They grow, obviously, from year one to about year six to seven when they can actually be harvested by people that want to come and cut their own trees and stuff like that. This type of use, you would think, kind of fits in with the residential feel, walking out, cutting a tree, you know, that kind of stuff there we really felt was the low impact. Now, what the variance is for and stuff like that is that obviously day one, they're not selling any trees. It's going to take a while to cultivate and to grow. And what they'd like to do is be able to sell trees at Christmas time, have, you know, a truck come in, make a delivery one time, and then sell those trees from the Thanksgiving to Christmas timeframe. We showed, and these will be discussion things at the point, but we showed a snack shack where you could get like your New Hampshire maple or hot chocolate or something like that. Nothing that we're selling outside of the normal type of stuff that you'd see at one of those there is what they're thinking. And again, we're moving this forward with discussions with you guys here to conceptual and that. Nothing's in stone. It's kind of trying to really want to get your feedback here today and see if we're even on the right page of what you're looking to do here or if we're just, you know, shouldn't even bother to move forward and pack up and look for something else. So that's kind of, I know there's some abutters that had some stuff here, so I kind of wanted to make sure that they had the ability to speak. But we work with the New Hampshire Extensions and the New Hampshire Conservation Commissions on working with the growing of the Christmas trees. So again, this is something that, you know, we believe is an agricultural use, which is allowed to be done. But then once we bring in the sale and stuff, we have to go to the variance and that type of stuff there. So, you know, again, it's about four to five weeks during that Thanksgiving to Christmas. We would talk at the site plan and I know you guys can input, but lighting and drainage and that kind of stuff. Even if we got past this, I will obviously look at that kind of stuff as we move forward. So I think I kind of just want to get feedback because that's kind of what we're really looking for here tonight. And, you know, questions and stuff like that that we'd have to answer to come back to, to have you guys at. I would like, if Derek would like to just say a word or two, my client here, just so you knew who he was and what he was trying to put together and then open it up for questions. Are you on the line, Derek?
I am, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Please, please say, give us in your name and address and then we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. My name's Derek Gagnon, this is my wife Vanessa. We currently reside in Bedford, New Hampshire, but we've been local residents most of our lives in Southern New Hampshire. So building a Christmas tree farm has been a longstanding dream of ours. We've been searching for land for quite some time. We really want to teach our boys. We have two young children. We really want to teach them the value of hard work and allow them kind of a place to connect with nature. And so this is kind of that perfect venue for us to do it if we can find the right place. And so, yeah. We really appreciate your time and your consideration. And I think Matt has kind of given you the broad details of it, but we'd be happy to answer any questions and look forward to your feedback and comments.
Thank you. Let's throw it open to the Board. Does the Board got any questions of the applicant or the map?
I do.
Go Nelson.
Oh, okay. A few things. First of all, there was mention of a house and then the house kind of disappeared in the second picture. Is, this is going to be a building lot as well? Is that correct for residential?
No. This is set up to be a residential house. I was just saying where we had showed it could go in the past. This would, if these, if they purchased this, this would just be a Christmas tree farm.
I see. The Christmas tree farm snack shack, I guess it was called, that seems to be in the setback for that property. So there's an issue there, right?
Actually, so the property line is right here, the magenta line. And this blue is an easement over the abutting property, so this building, here's the building setback right here, down to there and down to there. So I'm actually in the building setback for this lot.
Yeah. So you need some kind of variance for that, right?
Um, it could be to use, to have a use over the lot, I'll have to look into that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll touch on that. Yeah, so you'd have to have the retail sales variance to have that on the Raymond house property, uh, the existing house property, but in terms of a setback encroachment Nelson, there is none.
Uh, explain that to me, it looks to me like it is a setback encroachment.
Because the snack shack is proposed within the building footprint area, the setback, within, within the proper building envelope area of the existing house lot. It looks funky because what you're seeing there in the green is actually a proposed agricultural easement area to allow the, or a utility area, uh, access, basically crossover area.
Uh, okay.
So what we're proposing Nelson is right in here would be the shack, so you can see it's in the building area
Yeah, okay.
of this lot.
Property, and he's got an easement to, to work in.
We have an easement.
The other thing is, what's the treatment of the parking, there's a large number of parking spaces shown in your concept. Um, what uh, uh, is, is this paved, or is this just dirt, or what kind of treatment is it going to be for that parking area?
So, based on the minimal timeframe of it, we'd like to do something that's more of a gravel and pervious type service. We don't think it needs to be paved for for twelve months out of the year when we're using it for three months, so um, if we got to the site, we get through this level here, those are things that we're starting to talk with the uh, client and stuff like that about. Um, obviously they've got to deal with drainage and stuff like that, it's going to be reviewed by your staff and stuff like that, so, but we'd like to do something that's not invasive, you know, for eleven months out of the year, just to use it for one month.
Yeah, I think you have to treat it though as if it were impervious, if you use it as parking. Um, Bob, to help me out with that, I think that uh, even if it's not paved, you have to treat it as if it were. And you have to be able to handle that, that runoff.
One hundred percent, I have to deal with the drainage on it, just making a gravel doesn't get me away from drainage, I I agree a hundred percent on that.
Okay, I can't argue with that. That's about all I have right now. Uh, I'd like to hear from the abutters and neighbors, and of course that's ultimately.
I've got two abutters letters that I can read in, but everybody else is finished.
Okay, I'm finished for now, thank you.
Alistair, I don't know if you can see it, but Bill has been waving his hand that he'd like to speak.
As it's conceptual, are we gonna take the waivers?
No, 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 Bill, Bill's looking to speak.
Oh, sorry, Bill, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
That's okay, Alistair, not a problem, thank you. Um, I have to ask the, 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 the ten thousand dollar question. Derek, are, are you related to Arthur Pete Gagnon by any chance?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, well, we had a gentleman who used to sit on this board. And Pete Gagnon and his wife Nancy and, and Nelson spent, I hate to say this, was it forty years you served with Pete?
Around that, yeah.
Around that. Um, Pete was a certified arborist. Pete was, Pete, Pete was um, very good about, he was extremely knowledgeable about soils. And uh, I think if Pete was sitting here right now, he would be tickled pink because he ran the Willapon Nursery for so many years at the corner of Bedford and Jopper Road, raising his own trees and, and arbor vida and, and, and all sorts of different types of plants and flowers and um, I, I think the concept that you have here of, of a Christmas tree farm, I think is absolutely appropriate. Back in July of last year, this board had approved the other house lot, and there was concern with the neighbors about this particular um, pork chop lot, for the lack of a better term, you know, becoming residential, and then there was further concern uh, because the town owns, the town actually owns a lot on the corner of Turkey Hill and Sarah Drive. Uh, and thank you for pointing that out, that's map C lot four eighty, uh, lot eighty-nine on the plan there.
Ninety-nine.
Uh, ninety-nine, thank you. Uh, there, there was concern with the abutters that somebody could buy that and potentially lock into that or get an easement from the town, locking into this particular piece, piece of property and further burdening the, the neighborhood with an additional house or two. I think this is a, I think this is a wonderful idea, and, and coming up with a Christmas tree farm, I think of the Gagnons, um, I, we, we have friends that go to a, a big farm out in Northwood, uh, David Sidmore, who, uh, Lancer Bay's had a huge Christmas tree farm out there for years. Um, and it just, it, it, it just adds, just add some depth and some perspective to the neighborhood, and, and even better, um, even though it's not a, a conservation area per se, it's, it's, it's going to have that desired effect, you're still going to be able to maintain with some of your, with some of your jurisdictional wetlands there, imagine you're going to attract, you know, birds, waterfowl, I'm sure you got deer. I got, I got, I got, I got something similar adjacent to my property here on Jopper Road, because they live right next door to the Gagnons, and we have a very active uh, flock of rabbits that every now and then like to make a cameo and pop out, so I think this is, I really think this is a wonderful thing, I think it, it preserves the integrity of the neighborhood. Um, obviously, the busy times obviously going to be around Christmas time, um, which you, which you, which is good, so I think the, I'd be curious to know traffic impacts on Turkey Hill Road from day after Thanksgiving to December twenty-third, I think I'd be curious to know what kind of a, what kind of an impact we would be looking at. Um, the, the, what the, couple of questions that I did have is, are you, while your Christmas tree farm is growing, um, are you going to be uh, procuring Christmas trees from other parts of New Hampshire and be, and potentially selling them at that, at the location?
Yeah, that, that is our, our hope, um, because if we get started in that manner, we could um, start serving the community right off the bat, and it, it might also help, help us maybe uh, cover some of the initial costs of getting the farm started.
Okay, and, and for the other eleven months of the year, I, do you, do you intend on doing anything else, or just, you know, basically caring for the land and making sure that your trees are growing, that would be the other question that I have.
Yeah, um, we'll plant in the spring, we'll shear in the summer, uh, and we'll harvest uh, in, in the winter, so uh, pretty minimal, but we are gonna uh, enjoy taking care of the land for sure.
That, I did receive a letter from, and I'm sure the, the chairman will read it in, I did read a, get a favorable letter from Mr. Brad Parkhurst, who, who really thinks it's, you know, going to have a positive impact to the people that live on, on Northwood and Laurel and Sarah Drive, I saw, I, I, I want to give you and your wife, uh, and, and your two sons, I think this is a great idea, I really do. And uh, I look forward to seeing the project moving forward. And uh, I, i- if it comes to fruition, I look forward to having you in Merrimack and being able to provide something, something unique, as opposed to our families in Merrimack having to travel to, you know, other parts, uh, or maybe going, you know, I, I mean, we're a free market society, uh, it's, it's all competition, but I think the opportunity to go in and maybe cut down their Christmas tree in their own backyard, I think is a great idea, so. Um, thank you very much, it's, it's a wonderful project, and uh, I look forward to seeing how it progresses as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You Bill. Does any other member of the board want, uh, Nelson, go again.
I thought of something else while Bill was talking, uh, this, this wetland crossing, we had a little talk about it, but we kind of skipped over it when Matt made his presentation. Uh, it looks to me like the driveway has to cross a wetland area or drainage area of some kind. Uh, about a couple hundred feet back from Turkey Hill Road, in that, in that narrow little leg of the pork chop there.
So, when we got this approved Nelson, what I was just explaining was that we had our wetland scientists go out there and verify these wetlands that are here, this crossing here is already in place and stuff like that, there's no, there was nothing we had to do, this was going to service that single lot, the home in the back, and that's what we had gotten okay to do, so that's why we tied it up just to the buildable area back here, so this now would just become a walking path. This would just become a walking path to the back, they're not gonna, people would park up front. The goal would be to have people park here, and then they walk up up the walking path through the wetlands, it's kind of like an, you know, it's like walking into the gate and into the back area there. And uh, so no, there's no crossing that's needed for anything there, and there's no vehicles that we're talking about, um, back and forth.
Is there a culvert or something, or is something going to be in place there?
Um, that's a good question. I'll have to take a look at that, looks like we didn't do a culvert, I don't know if that's the high point, it's draining both directions, or if it's running it through, I, I'll take a look at that.
Please do, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else got any ma- questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please go, Neil.
Um, so I was just curious, when you, when you go ahead and you put in a Christmas tree farm, you have to clear cut the re- the whole property in order to put in a thousand trees per acre, uh, is this like a, is it a random planting, or are these things all going to be uh, put in rows, and, and uh, when you do a clear cut, well, actually, I'll let you answer that question first, I guess. Do, do you have to clear cut the whole property in order to put in a tree farm?
Yeah, I mean, we would do it in one acre, um, one acre windows as we do it, so like I said, plant about a thousand trees at a time. So that you kind of go through, there's a few of them that are over in Litchfield and stuff like that, that you can see, um, that have been set up there, but yes, you take an acre at a time and you kind of keep moving your, your um, fields down as you goes. So then obviously you cycle through in the years and stuff like that.
Right, you stagger the planting, so you have a, a continuous crop. Uh, is there any plan, or intentions of leaving a natural ba- uh, buffer around the area, so it, um, so all the neighbors aren't looking into a, into essentially a field?
I honestly haven't even got to that point yet there, I want to see the idea of this to you guys and stuff like that, if we get through this, and then, then I need to start getting my hand around how this thing gets constructed and built and permitted and stuff like that, so. The, good questions.
But you had also just mentioned that, that, that um, walking path through the wetland? You said that that won't be taking any vehicles, is that, is that constructed in a manner that it can take ve- like, construction vehicles, so you can clear the land and all that, or is that, is there going to be an impact? Or do you have to do something, put in a construction road and then take it out?
Well, that's, that's constructed, that's construct, that was laid out and approved and built, so that I could build a house in the back there, so that's all types of vehicles we're able to get through that, to do that, the, um, you know, concrete truck and that kind of stuff there, I'm going to have to have a discussion with Derek on what type of vehicle he needs to, to do that type of stuff, a logging truck, yeah, that is, it's all wide enough and stuff like that, we, we had it all set up for a house, so, but I will verify it all.
And uh, there won't be, there won't be any lighting or anything out there, so this would be something that you go out there and do during the day, uh, during daylight, cut the tree down?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Neil. Any other comment, co- comments from any other member of the board? There being none, I'll first read the two letters into the record. The first letter is from Robert and Deborah Utterow, who are abutters at five Acacia Street in Merrimack. We have some questions regarding the Wonderland Farm. Question one is, tree farms typically use pesticides, insecticides, herbicides and fungicides. If they're going to be used, what are some measures for preventing the chemicals from drifting into neighbors' property? And the second question is, how will the tree farm be irrigated? Thank you. And I'll read the second letter, and then you can answer both of them. The second letter is from Brad, Mr. Bradford Parkhurst Senior, who lives at one oh nine Turkey Hill Road, Merrimack. Re-planning board for the town in Merrimack Virtual Public Hearing. Dear Board, du- due to a scheduling conflict, I will be unable to attend the virtual meeting regarding Wonderland Farm applicant and Linda Raymond owner. Conceptual discussion regarding a proposed Christmas tree farm, including construction of site improvements and Christmas tree sales to be located at one oh five and one oh seven Turkey Hill Road. I am in favor of this proposal of use of the property described on tax map four C lots two two nine and two two nine one for the following reasons. Minimum ne- negative impact, if any, on the environment. In fact, it will probably result in a positive impact. Two, a tree farm would ins- would assist in the presence of the wildlife we currently enjoy. Deer, rabbits, occasional moose, and more than twen- twenty species of birds, including nesting wood ducks, where other types of development often reduce the land available for wildlife. Three, even though it might be considered a business, it extremely seasonal, most Christmas tree farms I am familiar with have a thirty day window for the cutting and sales of trees. I believe, four, I believe there would be a minimum of any impact on traffic. And five, there will also be no impact on the aquifer, which would be impacted by other uses of the protop- of the property. Thank you for considering my views, respect will be yours. Okay, that's all I have. Has everybody else got any further question? And Nelson, let's see your hand again.
Yes, I, I think the point raised about the pesticides and the, um, et cetera, fertilizers, or what all that will be used on these trees is an important question, and, and where the runoff goes. Uh, I would like uh, Matt to answer that if he can, and if not, be prepared to talk to it in a future time. I think that's.
I have a nice little cheeky from, from Derek and Vanessa here, that says that their Christmas tree farm will use natural growing practices, free of pesticides, not harming the land, air or water. Uh, the second point of that, the irrigation, I will sit down with them at some point as we move this forward, and I'll have that answer for you as we move forward with that one there, but uh, again, it sounds like this is really trying to be a family farm, and uh, doing, doing it right, so, uh, we will make sure that steps on the plans and you have it, but that's what they're proposing right now.
Herbicides were mentioned as well, so you want to look at those other things that are used to promote.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Any other further questions from anybody?
Is there ledge on this property?
Neil, go on.
Um, I can't answer that to right now to you, I know there's not exposed those, the test pits we dug out there, I don't believe it was within three feet, but I don't have any answer right in front of me, but I'll have it for you. I'm sure these guys have done some soil testing, that I can get some results from them on out there and have it for you the next hearing.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry Neil.
That's okay, um, I just, just out of curiosity, what kind of trees do you plan on, um, planting?
I'll let you handle that.
I can handle that one, yeah, so, um, we're, we're planning on having a pretty diverse offering, actually, so some that, some that are more native, but also um, some that are, are less known, so, um, we actually visited uh, an organic tree farm in Ware recently, and spent some time with a gentleman who used to chair the organic uh, commission in New Hampshire, and he has stuff from Korea, uh, from the UK, from all, all over, all over the world, um, and just, just really nice uh, group of trees that you just don't see everywhere, so we're, we're hoping some of those grow well, uh, in this, in the soil that we have um, at this location, so. To answer your question.
Come on.
Can't make promises till I put them in the ground and, and they live, so.
Yeah, right. That's all.
Okay. Well, any further questions from any member of the board? I'll throw the matter open to the general public, in case there is a member of the general public w- watching and would like to ask a question. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and obviously we look forward to you coming forward with converting this from a conceptual discussion into a plan or that we could vote upon. But do you have enough from us to go to the zoning board, which I understand you've got to do from Robert?
What, what do you think, Robert? I would say, I mean, I was, there's a lot of information we got today, I think it kind of gives us good direction, so I felt good about it.
I would agree. I would agree.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Matt, thank you. Derek, Vanessa, best of luck. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Have a great night.
Okay. That gets the items of, main items on the agenda. Uh, item five is a discussion, a possible action regarding other items of concern that Robert put forward. Five and six, Watkins Road, LLA Extension Request. Robert.
We do have, and I don't think it actually went out to you. Trying to.
Did you read the letter?
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't come up with it in front of there. It is. Uh, so we got an email from uh, Fieldstone Land Consultants who did the lot line adjustment between five and six Watkins Road as part of the Stagecoach Crossing subdivision. This was approved back in October. Um, if the board recalls, there was some complexity with the existing house lot that's there in terms of its access and how the driveway went over the abutting property and that was called a prescriptive easement because it also had the water access and it's been there forever. So the board asked that that get kind of cleaned up and formalized as a part of that lot line adjustment approval. So um, we got an email about that saying, hi, Robert, I've been corresponding with Greg Michael, who is uh, Mr. Lustoka's attorney, the applicant. And due to the complexity, excuse me, of the access issue and the continued research effort to re- uh, to resolve, we would like to file a request to extend for a period of six months in order to resolve that access issue. Um, so there's the request for the board, um, for them to get a six month extension on their conditional approval.
Has he got the time, Rob- Robert? There's time for him to do that.
No, yeah, I mean, their, their conditional approval doesn't expire until February now as it is, but they're looking for another six months to complete the title research and whatever else needs to be done so they can finalize that plan.
Okay. I don't know if you remember the board has any comment? Are you waving your hand to make a no- motion, Nelson?
I was. I was going to move if we grant this extension as requested. I think we should let them have the time to get it right. And uh, so I hereby make a motion to grant the extension of time for the resolution of this issue.
Nelson, do I have here a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. All in favor?
Roll call vote, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry?
You have to take a roll call.
I'm doing it.
Oh.
N- Nelson, just go.
I vote in favor of this motion.
Mr. Boyd.
Boyd votes aye.
Neil Alcatel. Neil, you go quiet.
I vote in favor of the motion.
And I, Alistair Mills also vote in favor of the motion. So that's four, zero, zero.
Thank you.
That's the only matters I have discussion and possible action. Does anybody else have any matters of disc- items of interest they want to discuss? Failing that, we will move on to the matter of the minutes of the last meeting, which is Tuesday, January the fifth.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the planning board minutes of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one is presented.
Nelson, I see you raising your hand.
I was raising it to second, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll take a roll call. Nelson Disco.
I vote in favor of this motion.
Mr. Boyd.
Boyd votes aye.
Nick, Mr. Anketell.
Aye, abstain.
Alistair Mills, I vote yes as well. So that's four, zero, zero to accept the minutes.
It's three zero, three zero one, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry, four, who voted?
Neil abstain. Neil Anketell abstain.
Sorry. Four, three, zero, one.
Three, zero, one.
Being nothing, no other matters to discuss. I'll take a motion for an adjournment.
Slow move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Thank you, Mr. Disco. You're seconding it. We'll take a roll call on that one. Mr. Disco.
I vote in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boyd.
Boyd votes aye.
Nick, Mr. Ne- Neil Anketell.
I vote aye.
And I, Alistair Mills, vote aye. So the, that's the four, zero, zero to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Merrimack TV is committed to our community. From gavel to gavel coverage of town and school board meetings to updates on town services and projects, we aim to keep you connected.
Uh, good morning. I'm Kyle Fox, Public Works Director for the Town of Merrimack.
Hi, I'm Diane Trippett. I'm the Town Clerk Tax Collector for the Town of Merrimack.
I'm Captain Matt Tarleton with the Merrimack Community Police Department.
And keep the public informed of every motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And many moments, so you can be confident that we're here for you. Thanks for watching. Stay connected. Follow Merrimack TV on Facebook.